Hey, I'm Austin Haygood.
And I'm Felicia Wama.
Welcome to the November 2019 edition of Paulding Post.
With Thanksgiving coming up, it has me thinking about what I'm thankful for. At the top of my list is, of course, family and friends. What about you, Austin?
Family, friends, and being able to work with Team Paulding is always a great pleasure. We want to wish everybody that's watching, everybody in Paulding County, Happy Thanksgiving. Hope you have a great November, and let's check out the show. Look, up in the sky, it's a bird.
It's a plane.
No, it's Star Girl.
We sat down with Emily Ship with the Dallas Theater to talk about her role as liaison for film productions in Dallas.
Star Girl, as many of you know, is the newest addition to the city's film production resume. Emily gave us an awesome interview, so let's get the cameras rolling and see what she had to say about Star Girl.
Hi, Emily. Thanks for talking with us today.
You're welcome. It's nice to be here.
Can you tell us what you do for the city of Dallas?
Yes, I am actually the manager of the Theater and Civic Center. So we've got two venues that a lot of times the folks in the city do not realize there's two venues here. We've got the Historic Theater, and on the backside, we have the newly renovated and added-on Civic Center space.
Well, we heard you had a special position working with the Star Girl production team as a liaison for Dallas?
Yes. It just makes sense for the department that is involved with production and theater to be involved with the filmings that happen down here in the city. It also was convenient because the first scenes that were filmed here were filmed interior of the theater. So it just kind of became part of what we do here. And yes, I am the city liaison, so any filmings that are downtown on public city property do come through me as far as scheduling and working with our department heads. You know, you've got to incorporate the Police Department, the Public Works Department, the Marshal, all of that. So that all falls under my realm of duties here for the city, and it's something I very much enjoy.
Well, did you get to meet any of the cast?
Working with Jeff Johns was absolutely phenomenal. I didn't know who Jeff Johns was. I'm not a comic person, and Shelley, my assistant manager, and her husband are hardcore comic folks from all those classics. And Jeff Johns is the name of all names in the comic world. He wrote Star Girl. It is a tribute to his sister, who was lost in a plane crash when she was a teenager. It is a story among many. He has worked on every big DC project you could possibly imagine, written for Green Lantern. I mean, he is DC Comics. He's phenomenal. So getting to work with him behind the scenes, to sit behind the camera and the monitors while we were filming some stunts on Main Street, and getting his take and the director's take on what was happening, for the theater nerd in me, that was way more exciting than meeting any of the stars, because that's the kind of stuff that is very special and unique to what we get to do here and an experience that, you know, I won't get to have very often. So it was really, really cool.
Do you know why Dallas was chosen to be Blue Valley Nebraska?
First and foremost, the city of Dallas is a film-ready city. That is something our mayor and council worked hard to make sure happened here, which basically means that we are welcoming and ready for groups to come down and film. Ironically, we had had a filming from Legacies, which is also a Warner Brothers production, back last November, and one of the location scouts for that show had been out here and left Legacies, was moving on to Star Girl, and knew what they were looking for in Star Girl. And that was a hometown atmosphere, very Americana, you know, a very family feel. And he was like, hey, I was just in this small town. They're fantastic to work with. It's a beautiful little town. It's exactly what you're looking for. They bring the whole production crew out, Jeff Johns, the directors, and they fell in love when they got here.
So having Dallas chosen, how does that benefit the city?
Oh, wow, that's huge. You know, first and foremost, it's exposure for the city, right? It's a small town. It is another spot here in the state of Georgia that is bringing in more film revenue, which, as we know, it's the Hollywood of the South, right? It's the new place for filming to take place. When there are production companies down here, you might have noticed that some of the awnings were replaced on some of the buildings. The production company prefers to use local companies and businesses to make that happen. They don't bring in, like, their companies from Atlanta or farther out. They ask us, hey, we need an electrician. Who do you recommend? Hey, we need to do this. We need new awnings. We need new signage. Is there anybody local that you would recommend? Their goal and desire is to put more money back into our community. So, I mean, it's a win-win for all of us, for sure.
That does sound great. So what other productions have you worked with?
Oh, let's see. We started out with Joyful Noise. There was Forever My Girl, which came out a few years ago, super sweet little love story that was filmed right here. The Community Coffee mural on the side of the building right there near Paulding Trophy, that was actually done for that movie, and we loved it, and, I mean, the owner of the building loved it, and we're like, yeah, we can totally keep that. Legacies back last fall, and then, of course, most recently, there was 13 episodes of Star Girl, and the city of Dallas was featured in 11 of those 13 episodes.
Oh, wow. I didn't realize there had been that many.
Yep, they film all. It's a streaming show. So that's the new hot thing, right? Everything's streamed and released all at one time, and Star Girl will be released, we're thinking probably about the beginning of 2020, and it will be released in its entirety. So the entire season will be released. But there was 13 full episodes, and the city of Dallas was in 11 of the 13. Yeah, it's huge.
Well, thanks for talking to us today and telling us all about this. It sounds like it's a real exciting thing for you to get to be involved with.
For sure.
Was there anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no. I would just say that, you know, if you have any questions about filming here in the city, don't hesitate to give me a call. Reach out via email. I'll be happy to answer. And we know as the city that it can be a little bit inconvenient at times, but it's well worth it for the city and for the community as a whole in the end, and to be patient and to enjoy it, because it will be super fun come January when we get to see our small town featured in such a way.
Thank you.
Deep in the unknown depths of Paulding County, Georgia, we stumbled upon a pond filled with exotic koi fish.
We met with the pond's caretaker, John, to find out how these beautiful fish ended up here in Paulding County.
Crikey.
We're here with John from DOT. He works in our traffic ops. John, tell us about this project, this little gem that's hidden in one of our parks.
Well, it's a pond. It's 2,200 gallons. Two and a half years ago, it was stagnant. The plumbing was broken. It wasn't working. There was no electricity running to it at the time. So I thought, well, I could take some of my koi fish from home and bring them here if I got this up and running. Got the fire department to help us out. They were able to, one day, bring in three tankers in with their training crew. Had to get another waterfall. Had to get more plumbing. Had to get more plumbing connectors, things like that. But once I got it all done, I got, uh, building maintenance helped me with getting electricity run back out here, and I got, brought in my own personal pump and the filter and got it up and running. But I have my koi in it. I've got brim in it. There's some comets, goldfish comets, in it, and about 100 little tiny little minnows that came out of my dad's pond at home.
Thank you, because it is a lovely addition, and I didn't know it was here, so it is a hidden gem.
I didn't know it was here either at first, but it's here now, and it's looking really good, and I'm very proud of it. Very proud of it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
On this month's edition of Project Paulding, we caught up with Jimmy Renfro, our Building Maintenance Manager, to find out more about how they are helping to light up the county. Hi, Jimmy. Thanks for talking with us today. We understand that you and your team are about to undergo a new project at Mount Taber Park. Can you tell us about that?
Yes, ma'am. We're fixing to change out all the parking lot lighting there. It's a total of 29 light fixtures to a new LED light that will be cheaper for us to operate on power consumption, and it'll also provide a brighter light and more light coverage than what we have now.
About how long will this project take?
It should take about a week for us to start and finish the project.
How is this project being funded?
It is being funded by Splos.
What other projects can you tell us about?
Well, recently, we have changed all of the gym lights at Taylor Farm and Mount Taber to LED lighting, cutting down on power consumption there. We've also changed out all the tunnel lights on the Silver Comet Trail to LED lights, and we've also changed all the lights in the building here on the first floor to LED lights. So all of this means more energy-efficient lighting for us, for the county. But we've really enjoyed working with Michael Justice at Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs and helping them with their maintenance needs.
Well, thank you for talking to us, and thank you for all that you do for us in the county.
Thank you.
Thanks for tuning into this month's edition of Paulding Post.
We hope you have a fantastic November and great Thanksgiving. And don't forget, now that the time changes here, change your smoke detector batteries.
Also, don't forget, stay cool, Paulding County.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the November session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. At this time, if you'd please take your seat and turn off any mobile or audible devices, phones, beepers, anything like that, so they don't interrupt the proceedings in the meeting. Some of you may be holding on to beepers. I don't know.
They still use beepers.
Somebody does. We're going to dispense with the reading of how to participate in a public meeting. If you'd like to get a copy of the rules for that, I'm sure there's some in the back of the room here or just outside in the lobby. Is the first item to consider is the review of the minutes from the previous sessions of this body or session of this body. Has everybody had a chance to see those? Any comments, concerns, edits? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion regarding the minutes from previous session of this body.
Move to accept. Minutes as presented?
I have a move to accept the minutes as presented by Ms. Turnbull. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Lowe. All in favor? Motion passes 6-0 and 1. Again, the Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body. We will hear the applications presented to us today. The applicant of each application must be present for it to be considered. Once we have heard the case, we will give an opportunity for the person presenting the application, the applicant or their agent, 15 minutes to make the presentation. They may use all of that time or reserve some for rebuttal. Questions from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners do not count against that time, neither do questions that we may have for staff. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding an application, 15 minutes is allotted for that side as well. It is a cumulative time, so if you have more than one person wishing to speak, please be mindful of the person behind you. Every person wishing to speak today, including the applicant, must come up to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. All of the items on the agenda today are in Paulding County. There are none for the city of Hiram, so all of the recommendations will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners at the December 10th meeting at 2:00. Just want to make sure. I'd rather you tell me. So all of these applications, the recommendations will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting on December 10th at 2:00. And again, for it to be considered, the applicant must be present at that meeting. At this time, Mr. Robinson, do we want to clarify any of the items on the agenda?
Yes, I do want to clarify. Application 201901 TAA is a text amendment request that has been forwarded to the January Planning Commission hearing. They want to make some more adjustments to their proposal. Application 201924Z, that application is also forwarded for additional staff review and comments and working with that applicant, and it's also to the January meeting.
All right. So for our first application, is the applicant present?
Okay. Thank you. It's 201923Z, application by Chris Cochrane to rezon approximately 25.04 acres from B1 General Business and PRD Planned Residential Development to R55 Active Adult Residential for a 75-unit active adult community containing single-family dwellings. Property is located in Land Lots 537, 538, District 3, Section 3. It's on the north side of Seven Hills Connector, east of Prescott Drive, and north of Cedar Crest Boulevard. It's in Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended approval with five stipulations. That's printed, and we've had one call with questions, and applicant is present.
Thank you very much. If the applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon. Chris Cochrane. I'm the applicant. So the rezoning is, we have a current zoning of a PRD, which is a non-conforming PRD, that I'd like to rezone to R55. There is a small portion of the existing B1 that will be also included in that, but we are keeping over 20 acres of, approximately 20 acres of B1 that we will be developing commercial as part of this overall development. So we're basically trying to rezone just the PRD to R55. And we've read over the stipulations. I would ask that if we could get some clarification on stipulation number five, part of the development. I will be developing the commercial side, but I'm trying to sell the R55 portion, and it's hard for me to explain to a potential buyer what the cost of this is going to be when we're just have a vague comment of participating in the off-site improvement.
All right.
So...
We'll do that as soon as you finish your presentation. Again, that will come as far as input from the staff.
Okay.
It won't count against your time.
Okay.
Anything further you'd like to add?
Nope, that's pretty much it.
All right. Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission prior to us getting to his question?
Chris, you on the B1 that shows access into the property?
Correct.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Corey, could we get clarification on what he's asking with regard to item number five, the stipulations?
Yeah, it didn't make it in the note, but it was also another stipulation that was carried over from the previous. So I think when a lot of this was zoned previously, it was when a lot of upgrades were happening. So this particular property had been zoned with participating in some of that off-site improvements to wastewater infrastructure. So we felt like it should stay with the property. We didn't define it. It has been defined in other developments. It's $500 a lot, though, so that's probably what we would look at doing.
All right.
But that came with the PRD zoning that was previously approved, is what you're saying?
Yeah, the previous zoning, 2006, had this same stipulation as well as the other about reuse.
Did that answer your question?
It does.
All right. Are there any further questions from the Board of Commissioners to the applicant at this time? Planning Commission?
Yes. Are you agreeable to Paulding?
Are you agreeable to 500 a lot?
If that's what the stipulation is, is it going to be that amount, or...
That was just a number he threw out.
Yeah, exactly. You know, I would much prefer to have a number that I would have an idea what it's going to be, so...
Well, Corey, if I come back to you on that, is that something that is typically going to be established in a setting such as this, or will that be further conversation between the Water Department, Water and Sewer Department, and the developer?
I mean, that's going to be my suggestion, is 500 a lot. I don't see us doing anything more than that. It's stuff that's already in, and that's just how I've seen it in another development, so...
Well, assuming, and again, this is an assumption at this point, because we've not yet heard anybody else speaking on behalf of the applicant or those speaking in opposition, if there are any. Currently, the way the stipulations are listed, there is no number assigned to that stipulation. So, is that something that is going to be established in negotiations after this meeting, or is that a number that is supposed to be incorporated into the agenda here?
I'd have to get back with you on that. I mean, if it's something we need to put in the stiff, I guess it can be put in the stiff, but I guess I need to leave it up to others, maybe.
Okay.
It's just, I've never seen any number defined, really, so...
Okay. Well, that's my only question. I mean, I don't mind moving forward as we are right now, but I don't want to further a confusion on the part of the applicant or inhibit the county in what they're needing to have done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, right now, I have no direction on which way to go.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if that's a number that's being considered, I would recommend that it be up to 500, and it leaves more flexibility in there and then specifically hold it to that number.
Mr. Phillips, is that it?
That would... I think that would work. I know that the applicant is seeking clarity right now on what that statement is, and Mr. Coats doesn't seem to think it'll be any higher than that. I understand the applicant's desire to have that set in stone as he goes forward, as opposed to getting it approved and then someday finding some much larger number floated out there. And if Mr. Coats is good with that, in his opinion, I think that that's probably good in the form of amended stipulation, assuming the applicant's agreeable.
And that would leave it in the form of being stated of up to $500 per lot.
Right.
And then you can get with the Water and Sewer Department to figure out what that exact monetary figure is going to be.
Right.
And of course, that's going to be up to my Planning Commission here to make that motion, so...
Sure.
Anything further you need to add?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, at this point, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2019-23Z. Mr. Robinson, was there something you wished to add?
No.
Okay. With regard to application 2019-23-Z.
Motion to approve with the amended stipulation number five that participate would be up to $500 per lot.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Lowe and a second by Mr. Leggett with the amended stipulation number five adding with participation of up to $500 per lot. All in favor? And again, this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioner on the December 10th meeting at 2:00. You need to be there for it to be heard. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Next application, 2019-25Z, application by All Things Outdoors LLC, Frankie Willingham, to rezon approximately 5.56 acres from B1 general business to B2 highway business for a full-service landscape company. Property is located in Land Lot 615, District 2, Section 3. It's on the northeast side of Rosedale Drive, south of Depot Drive. Address is 331 Rosedale Drive. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with seven printed stipulations, and we've noted no cause or opposition on this application.
The applicant's present?
And we have applications present.
If you would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners and staff. My name is Jonathan Jones. I'm here representing All Things Outdoors for the rezoning application. The property currently is zoned B1, and the intended use to be a full-service landscape company, so that would require a B2 zoning. To get you familiar with exactly where this property is, if you've been to the intersection there, Depot Drive and Rosedale, it's the land that was formerly part of the Rakestraw family's land there that backs right up to the Home Depot and to the Sam's Club. Staff has recommended approval. I mean, staff has said it's in conformance and meets the future land use. There is one adjacent property that has residential zoning. We're required to have a 40-foot planted or undisturbed buffer at that location. And other than that, my client has reviewed the zoning stipulations and is in agreement with those, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this project.
All right. So, you have a concern with regard to the landscaping requirement?
No.
No? Okay.
No, no, I'm just noting, so if anybody's concerned from the public on that residential, there's a buffer that's required there, so...
Well, sorry, when you say noted, I take it to mean you want to have some discussion about it.
No, it's all good.
All right. Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
Got a question as far as just pertaining to the last zoning change in, I think, your house. So, originally, we zoned over there across from Nivo Elementary to park equipment there. Is that going to be... Are you going to have two locations, or are you moving everything from your house to this location?
So, I'll speak for Ms. Willham. The intended use at the residence there was to park his equipment. After the fact, he found this property. This property meets the need. It's more suitable for it. He doesn't intend to have two set locations or operations. That's not to say that he may not store some inventory at that location, but most likely that will not be the case, because it doesn't work too good to be, you know, inefficient operating from one part of the south part of the county and one in Hiram. So, most likely, he'll run his entire facility out of here. He intends to have a really nice hardscape landscape area that people can see what they offer there at All Things Outdoors, but know that the previous future land use was to give him somewhere to go, because he's literally out of room right now. So, this is his number-one and most-desired location, and if the zoning's approved, this will be where he finds his facility and does probably 99% of his business, so...
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Planning Commission? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2019-25-Z.
A move that we approve as presented with the stipulation.
I have a motion from Ms. Turnbull to approve with the seven listed stipulations and a second by Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, this application will be forwarded to the December 10th meeting at 2:00. Applicant will need to be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Final application is 2019-26Z, application by Blue River Development LLC, a care of Joel Larkin, to rezon approximately 92.18 acres from R2 suburban residential to R2 with sewer, suburban residential with sewer for 132 lot, single-family residential development. Property is located in Land Lots 1247, 1248, 1273, District 3, Section 3. It's on the north side of Dallas-Aquworth Highway, east of Silver Oak Drive. Address to the site is 3887 Dallas-Aquworth Highway. It's in Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended approval with 10 amended stipulations. We've had input and concerns from four adjoining property owners. Some would question, some with definite concerns. And just to verify, the printed stipulations of 10 that's in the packets and available in the back here are the correct stipulations. The two that were earlier in the conversation, number four and seven, were removed, and I will read those just to let everybody know exactly what they were. Owner-developer is required to meet all county development standards and ordinances related to project improvements. That's required anyway, so that one's removed. And Paulding DOT has agreed to remove what was number seven. Owner-developer agrees to provide a traffic impact study for this development, that they would work that out in the plan review process. The applicant is present.
If the applicant would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address
Good afternoon. My name's Joel Larkin. I'm with the law firm Sams, Larkin, and Huff in Marietta, Georgia, and I'm pleased to represent the applicant, Blue River Development LLC. They're a well-regarded developer in the metropolitan Atlanta area. We have before you today a rezoning of about 92 acres located on Dallas-Aquworth Highway, just east of the Silver Oak subdivision. Silver Oak is the one you see in purple up there on the map. That's a PRD subdivision that Century is selling homes in. My understanding is they sell in the mid to upper 200s now. It's been a very successful subdivision. The density of that subdivision is about 2.7 units per acre, according to my calculations. The adjacent property that we have been for zoning is a similar-sized piece of property at 92 acres. It's currently zoned R2 under your zoning ordinance. As you all know, you have an R2 and an R2 with sewer, and there's different development criteria for the two. Under the R2, we can develop 20,000-square-foot lots with homes, minimum of 1,100 square feet, on 100-foot-wide lots. There's no real architectural restrictions and no real buffer requirements against adjoining property owners. Had a local engineer take a look at those criteria for the existing R2 zoning and had him look at some of the other R2 subdivisions, and he advised me that the yield that was obtainable on the R2 as it's currently zoned is in the neighborhood of 1.5 units per acre. We're proposing to rezone this to R2 and to connect to sewer. That will allow 15,000-square-foot lots, 85 feet wide. We have submitted a site plan that shows development of 132 lots, which is a yield of 1.47, I believe, or 1.43 units per acre. That's essentially identical to the yield that is obtainable under the current zoning. So, this rezoning will allow us some different lot development criteria, but we're not looking to increase the yield under the proposed plan. By having the narrower lots, we are allowed to build something that the market desires more. It allows us to shorten the streets, and it impacts the way that the property is graded. Staff has reviewed this and determined that it's consistent with all of the applicable land use plans and maps. It's consistent with development and use in the area. If anything, it's an underutilization that we propose. They have requested, though, as a part of our application, that we agree to criteria that are not currently applicable to the property and which wouldn't currently apply to the R2 with sewer. Most notably, those are the architectural requirements that they have listed on what's now, I believe it's number 10. Yeah, what they've done is they've pulled out higher-end development criteria that come from your low-density quality overlay and requested that we agree to certain aspects of them. And we have reviewed them, and the applicant is agreeable to those items under 10A and B with one modification that Chris has consented to, and that is number seven. It says a roof with a pitch greater than 812 and a minimum overhang of 12 inches. Instead of saying greater than 812, it should read a pitch of 812 or greater. It's our experience that the 812 pitch is actually the most desired pitch that's used frequently, and that's... We'd like to be able to build the 812 and not have to go greater. Otherwise, the applicant is agreeable to all of the conditions that are on your recommendation. That's numbers one through 10. We also understand... Oh, and as a result of these criteria and consistent with the plans that this developer has, we anticipate beginning purchase prices for the homes in the $300,000 and probably moving into the $350s and up. We understand that the school board has concerns about the patterns of residential development, particularly in this area, given the current occupancies at the various schools. We have had some discussions with them, and I'm sure they're going to speak here today, but we have proposed a condition of zoning similar to the one that Piedmont Residential agreed to several months ago, and that was that we will not pull a land disturbance permit before July 1, 2020. We've also offered as an alternative or in addition that we also will not pull building permits then until January 1, 2021. What that will do is essentially not, you know, it'll delay bringing any students into the school system, probably until that following fall. And it's my understanding that the school system is agreeable to that. I think they were also pleased, and again, I'll let them speak, to hear our price points, because I think we're in a price point where, contrary to a lot of the concerns that we've heard and read about, we actually will support the need at those price points. With that, I heard reference from Chris to contact from four adjoining property owners. I'm aware of two of them. There was a gentleman in that little bumpout on the front who had some concerns about the location of his septic system. I have talked with him, and we've agreed to look at that to see... He's not sure if it may be across the line, but we're going to look at that with him during plan review. There's also a gentleman who has an easement running up the east side of the property to get back to his, and I met with him, and again, we're going to look at that during the plan review to see if there's an overlap and try to address it. I'm not aware of other people who've contacted. If there are, I'm happy to talk with them and see what their concerns are and try to address them. With that, I'll reserve the remainder of my time, and I'm happy to respond to questions.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Thank you.
Board of Commissioners, any questions?
The property owner at, I believe it's 3891, it's that other inset there to the upper right, I guess he currently has an easement. He's contacted me and you, Chris. Is there anything that's going to be worked out with him so he can keep his easement?
I met with him on site yesterday. He indicated that he's likely going to get his title company involved, but right now, we're not sure if there is a problem. His easement cuts through, right where you see the 555. It kind of cuts through there, and it may or may not be on part of our property. If it is, it looks like it straddles our open space. So, he and I walked it, and, you know, it may be relocated, it may not, depending on, but he indicated that he was happy working with us in the plan review. He said he wasn't going to show up today. There he is, so we'll let him speak for himself. They'll let you speak at the appropriate time.
Mr. Larkin?
Yes.
How do this have been worked out during the process? Out of this, if they work that during the process with our staff, is there any possibility that due to congestion on the road there and the adjoining subdivision, that maybe a secondary outlet could be used into three eighty-one there to help with congestion?
You mean into that street that goes back into Silver Oak?
Well, I was thinking, the one that I was looking at, maybe in the area of lot number twenty seventeen, somewhere in that area, that would possibly, you could have another access out into three eighty-one. Because you're, from what I saw, you're going up a hill, going in into your development.
Three eighty-one is the old nomenclature for Dallas Akworth Highway. It's now County Route seven ten.
Right now, we haven't had any meaningful dialogue with the DOT about where our entrance is gonna be, and there's a stipulation that we're gonna work with them during plan review. So we've showed a potential place for it that seemed to make sense to our engineers. But I'm sure they're gonna have something to say about it, and so I, I mean, I, I don't know that we've got strong feelings about it right now. We want it to be in a safe place that works. So, and I don't see George, so I...
Ms. Caker, or Mr. Davis, one of you had a question?
I did. Mr. Larkin, could you repeat the yield numbers, the exist, the yield possible on the existing zoning and the yield you're looking for under the proposed zoning?
The yield that I was advised, and I had the engineer pull up, developed R2 subdivisions and determine what their yields were, and he told me one point five. And at twenty thousand a square foot lots, that would leave, you know, thirteen thousand square foot for roads and miscellaneous things, you know. But, and the yield we've got is one point four three, one point four three, I think. Do you have that on your staff right there? We're under one point five.
Okay, thank you.
According to our engineers' calculation, we're at one point four three units per acre.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from the Board of Commissioners?
I have a question. What is the square footage of the dwellings that you're gonna build? I know what it is under the R2, but...
We don't have the house models to show you here today. The R2 required eleven hundred, but we're, that's not what that, eighteen hundred is the minimum your zoning ordinance requires. It'll be in excess of that in order to generate the price point of three hundred and up. Are you able to tell me more than that?
Yes, sir.
That's accurate, so...
Okay.
So more than eighteen hundred is the only thing I can definitively tell you. But an eighteen hundred wouldn't yield a house price of three hundred plus, unless we were really good and it settled.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Planning Commission? Thank you, Mr. Larkin.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to this application, may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Hey, my name is Mark Winters. I'm in thirty-eight ninety-one Dallas Akworth Highway. I was the gentleman who's referenced of having the easement running alongside property or parcel five fifty-three. Not opposed to the development. My concerns, I've been working with Mr. Larkin yesterday about having the easement issue straightened out. I think we can find a favorable solution to that. I would ask, however, for my property and for the other property up at the front, that the developer put in a natural fencing, whether it be shrubs or a, some type of fencing material along the easement and the property line. I have a fear that the lot owners running along the easement will use that as their personal entryway into the back of their homes, storage of the trailers and storage of the boats. So if we can have some type of barrier to keep them off of that easement. And that's it.
All right.
Can I hear again what the request was?
Barrier, some type of fencing or natural barrier. People can use that.
I'll be covering that when I come back around.
My name is Brian O'Tott. I'm Superintendent of the Paulding County School District, and just really wanted to provide a couple of comments at the meeting today. First, just a little bit of data about the school district where we currently are. As of today, we have thirty thousand two hundred and twenty-six K-12 students. In addition to that, we have two hundred and ninety-five students aged three and four who we serve through our special needs pre-K program. Paulding County, according to U.S. Census data, has more people per household than others in our state. And that data says that in Paulding County, two point, we have two point nine five residents per home with a state average of two point seven one. That means we have nine percent more people per home than many of our communities that surround us. And of course, what does that mean for Paulding County School District is more students than comparables. On top of that, we have a larger population of school-aged children than others. In Paulding County, twenty point two percent of our population is school age with a state average at seventeen point eight. Again, we have more kids per home in our district. We are the twelfth largest of the one hundred and eighty districts in Georgia, but we're also one hundred and fifty-fourth out of one hundred and eighty in total revenue. And I'll get to that in just a second, but really, why is that? It's because we have a lower-than-average commercial and industrial tax base. Twenty percent of our digest, or approximately twenty percent of our digest, is non-residential. A large district average for school districts in the state of Georgia is that to be forty percent. So again, a lot of the issue that creates this low-well status for us, of course, is the disproportionate amount of residential versus commercial tax base. We also have a higher percentage of school-aged children, and for us, the net, net digest per student is thirty percent lower than the average school district in Georgia. So basically, what that means is if you take the entire tax digest and you divide it by the number of students, we have a lower percentage, and thirty percent lower than comparables. But basically, what I wanted to share with you today is, one, we did have an opportunity to speak with the developer, but we're here because more homes equals more students. Abney Elementary School currently has one thousand three hundred and forty-three students in it, and it's one hundred and twelve percent of capacity. Moses Middle School has six hundred and seventy-five students, and it's one hundred and fifteen percent of capacity. East Paulding High School, the districted high school, has one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two students, and it's at ninety-four percent of capacity. So we actually did a little bit of an analysis as a district. The neighboring development, Silver Oak, consists of two hundred and forty-two homes, and currently, as of today, there are one hundred and forty-nine students attending a Paulding County school from that development. So we took those numbers, and we basically said with one hundred and thirty-two projected homes, what might that look at like over build-out? So with that sixty-two percent of the development having school-aged children using that same number, we'd be looking at bringing eighty-two school-aged children to the school district through those homes. And basically, again, for us, growth is an issue, as you know, we just passed an East Bloss. So in terms of comments from the school district, some that have already actually been mentioned, we would support a voluntary agreement to delay development to allow the districts to finalize planning related to capacity and construction. We would also agree that the R2 with sewer stipulations and the additional ten, again, are things that we feel are beneficial in terms of the type of development and the price point. Because for us in Paulding County, in order to generate the twenty-six hundred dollars of local tax funds that it costs to fully educate the child, it takes basically a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home to generate that. So again, the stipulations, the larger lot size, again, supports, again, some of the comments provided earlier. Other comments we would provide is consideration of one home per acre and increasing the square footage of the home somewhere north of, of two thousand, probably twenty-two hundred square feet. And again, as been the past, agree to voluntarily contribute at least five hundred per lot, per lot, when final plat is filled, as has been the custom over time here in Paulding County. So again, appreciate the opportunity to speak, be glad to answer any questions, but do sincerely appreciate all the work that you do, as well as our Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Dr. O'Tott. Before I go back to the applicant, are there any questions from the Planning Commission to either staff or the previous speaker, Dr. O'Tott? Board of Commissioners, any questions? When you were up previously, you proposed a condition of zoning that would delay development. And I don't know that I captured the entire detail of that. Would you mind restating that for me again?
Yes, I thought we had an agreement with a condition that we delay land disturbance permit until July one, twenty twenty, and building permits until January one, twenty twenty-one. And we're agreeable to doing that. I'm not sure I understood that presentation. We're not agreeable to, you know, the other suggestions as far as one home per acre and a financial contribution. With the product that we're proposing to build, it sounds like I heard that they will be self-staining from the school standpoint. We anticipate being in the price point that he said supports itself. So I don't, I'm not sure if that was directed towards our application, but we are agreeable to the stipulations on the delays. We're also...
So in the comment, commentary from, from the school district, the one home per acre is not something that you're willing to entertain?
No, sir. We can do much better than that.
I wanna make sure that I clarify.
And I don't know if that was being proposed for this project. I wasn't clear.
You can, you can speak to me, sir.
Okay, I, but no, no. Currently, we can, I mean, that, that wouldn't be economic.
And the twenty-two hundred square feet per unit, I mean, that was another...
Oh, I didn't hear that one, I know. We need to be able to respond to the market, so...
Okay. And then there was a comment with regarding a five hundred dollar per lot, similar to the last development that we, we spoke of, but this was more in line with what the school did. Pardon me for a second. Is this something that we used to do? Maybe Mr. Robinson can shed some light on that one because we haven't, haven't addressed that in a while.
Back in the mid-two thousands, two thousand six, seven timeframes, there was a lot of concerns, a lot of, lot of building permits being issued back then, and a lot of the local developers and builders at the time with concerns about the school system back then would volunteer, or five hundred dollars per lot at the time of final plat, platting as a zoning condition. So it was, it was, it was a norm in two thousand six and two thousand seven.
Is there anything, and maybe Mr. Phillips, you would be called to answer this one, again, I haven't heard of doing this in quite some time. So before it becomes a consideration for the Planning Commission, is there a legality involved there that we would need to be concerned with?
If there's a voluntary contribution, obviously not. If it's a mandatory contribution, yes, there is a legal concern.
By making it a stipulation, would that not then make it mandatory?
Yes, it would. As a, as a involuntary stipulation, that would create a legal issue.
Okay. Mr. Larkin, you can continue if you would like.
Yes, on that monetary issue, this was something that the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission visited the end of last year on, on several applications. And the argument that was made by the builders in those cases was that calling it voluntary was maybe an artful use of words. It was being requested on all rezonings, but not imposed on other developments, and it created a competitive disadvantage between previously zoned lots and newly zoned lots. So that was essentially dropped sometime around December of last year. You did do that recently again, or the board did, but that was on a PRD that had been tabled back in two thousand seven, and it had, it was included in those old stipulations. That was not included in the recent rezoning for Piedmont Residential, where the board actually took property that was zoned non-residential and zoned it residential. And as a part of that application, the delay stipulation was included, but no financial contributions. And I don't know the price points or anything in that case, but in this case, you know, we're gonna be selling product that will support itself, and we need to be able to compete with the rest of the market. We can't encumber our lots.
Well, I wanted to take a moment and get you back up here because I didn't want to go too much further down the road with the opposition's time to speak and not address those questions because I, too much distance, I think, would have caused, caused me an issue or caused people an issue. Could I ask you to have a seat on the front?
Sure.
And let me go ahead and resume with the opposition, and I'll finish that and bring you back up.
All right, thank you.
And my apologies for any kind of confusion that I'm causing. I don't intend to. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Hearing none, again, Mr. Larkin, in order to round out the discussion, is there anything else that you'd wish to add on your own time?
Yes, thank you. And again, I want to, want to remind the board that the yield that we're looking at here is the yield that we can develop currently. So we're not proposing, even if we didn't support ourselves, which it sounds like we do from, we're not proposing any increase in the demand on the school system that hasn't already been zoned. So, but then moving on to the bound, the issue regarding the easement. The gentleman requested that we install some type of fence or some type of landscaping or other. And we're, we are willing to do that, you know, but the determination as far as whether it's landscaping or fence, we'd like to make that with him and staff at the time we get the plans reviewed, because until we locate exactly where the easement's gonna end up, it's hard to determine whether a fence or landscaping is more appropriate. And it may be that the natural landscaping will be enough, or we can just, you know, augment that. If not, then we can look at a fence. But we are, we're certainly more than willing to work with the gentleman and address that. And that's all the comments I have right now.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned your price point was three hundred thousand start to three fifty and up.
Yes.
And I heard Dr. O'Tott say something that a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house would, would balance out and pay everything. Would your company be willing for any homes that you sold under three hundred fifty thousand dollars to provide some kind of supplement to the Board of Education for the schools?
I don't, I don't have the, the people available who could do that analysis and make that determination. I think that would be a very, though, a bad precedent to set, and I'm not sure it would be legal. In fact, I'm pretty sure it wouldn't be legal. It's essentially an impact fee that you're, would be imposing without going through the statutory guidelines, but...
But as we look at this, we're looking at what the impact is gonna be on our school system. Something needs to be worked out where builders are gonna come in and if they're gonna build a house under the three hundred fifty thousand dollar, which balances out, something, we need to look at something. Maybe it's, you know, through the commission, through the builders, whatever, to offset the cost to the school system.
I concur with you that that's an issue, and it's an issue in almost every county. The problem is if you just impose it on rezonings, you're not, you're not applying the burden in an appropriate manner throughout the county. We could build approximately a hundred and fifty houses right now under, if you do it that way, and we don't pay anything.
Right.
And we could build eleven hundred square foot houses and sell them for two hundred thousand, and now we'd be, we'd be hurting the school system. And what you're trying to do, what you're not trying to do, but what you would effectively be doing is burdening this project in a way that actually ends up hurting the county and the school system.
Are there any further questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Mr. Larkin, you made comment regarding, you know, and we already know about the amendment to remove a couple of the zoning conditions because they were pre-existing in development regulations. And then in addressing Mr. Winters' discussion item, which was about the natural fencing, and your commentary on it saying that you would be agreeable, or your applicant, your client would be agreeable to establishing a type of fencing, whether it be a fence or a natural barrier. Would you have any opposition to having that as an existing stipulation?
No, we would be agreeable to a stipulation that would say that we would put a fence or... or landscape buffering along the back of lots adjacent to his. If it's, if it ends up being common area...
And that would essentially be stipulation number 11?
Yes.
And, okay.
And we'd like to work with him and staff during the process to see what's appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, if I might have a saved round comment?
Yes, sir.
It's not a question, it's just a comment. And I appreciate Mr. Henson's remarks about a price point that'll provide the services. And I appreciate the school system being here and pointing that out. Because it's not just the, the school system where 65% of our taxes go, but the increased traffic for this number of residents and the highway requirements to provide mobility is huge. And if Paulding County doesn't address these infrastructure issues, then we're going to continue to get farther and farther behind.
Thank you, Mr. Carl Michael.
I'd like to make a comment about as far as a fence. I mean, as far as a fence, it's okay the first five years, but no one keeps up that fence. I mean, a buffer, to me, works a lot better than a fence. I mean, you know, I can show you a lot of places in this county that a developer has been made to put up a fence in the past, and the homeowner doesn't keep it up, and it looks like, you know, just, so. I would suggest a planted buffer before fence.
Thank you.
Mr. Stover, we were actually discussed if we do do a fence. He's more worried about people coming off his easement to access their lots. So, the brief conversation we had was that if it was a fence, it's likely to be chain link or something like that, you know. But, but we'd like the latitude to work it out with him. We share your concern, though, about maintaining the fence. So, one of the questions is what kind of fence, and then whose fence it would be once it's built. It may well be that the agreement is that it's his fence. So, but we do share that concern. People throw up wood privacy fences, and 10 years later, the slats are falling down. And I've got that in my neighborhood in Cobb. We fight about it all the time.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from the Board of Commissioners?
Mr. Larkin, in the staff comments, they were requesting an archaeological study due to the Civil War battlefield at New Hope Church. Are y'all men?
We are agreeable to that.
Any other questions from either the Board of Commissioners or the Planning Commission?
May I just remind you, we had asked that you've modified that roof pitch stipulation?
Yeah, there is a request on behalf of the applicant to modify the roof pitch, which is part of the list of development regulations. It's A7. And instead of it saying a pitch greater than 812, it would be a pitch of 812 or greater as an amended. And I'm going to speak to staff after you have a seat, so.
Thank you.
And Chris, would there be any objection from the staff as far as that goes?
There's not an objection to that one. I did, if it's okay, I would like to do a little clarification, make sure everybody's on, there is a required 25-foot buffer along all adjoining property lines, which would catch a lot of those areas around the neighbor's houses and such. And so, that would be a part of that buffering.
As a standard development regulation.
As a standard requirement.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the staff regarding this application?
I have a question for the school board. When would you, I know you're not up at the podium, but when, when would you have the facilities in place to make it sufficient to cover all these students in this development? Do you get any kind of proposed developments? Is this the same one that Piedmont, ES Moses, and several of the others? I know you have some future projects that were coming on board, I believe.
We do, we do have projects.
Could I ask you to please step back around to the lectern, please? Thank you.
If you'd like, I'm on my board meetings. Yeah, we do. As we've presented throughout this community in the recent ESPOSS campaign, we would be looking at additions to Moses Middle School to increase capacity there. Part of the rationale for that addition is not only support the students and the growing population that Moses currently serves, but also to reduce some of the capacity at McClure Middle. Also, we do have at least one elementary addition planned in that area to relieve overcrowding because all of the elementary schools, when you look at Russam, Shelton, Abney, and Burnt Hickory, are well over their design capacity. So, we do have plans, yes.
So, their proposal to delay building permits to 2021, is that, is that going to work with your future construction or not?
I'll be honest with you, the primary concern is Abney. With 1,350 students at WC Abney, well, we would have to look at potentially as maybe even rezoning this development to another school. So, it, I don't think, January of '21, before you start building any homes in the development, I think would help us get there, but we would still have to look at where this development may lie in the greater scheme of things.
Thank you.
Any other questions to staff? Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners? At this time, we'll entertain a motion with regard to application 2019-26Z. Please keep in mind the note for a potential addition to the stipulations and the amending of the development regulations, particularly A7.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
With the amendment to stipulation number seven, that it read a pitch of 812 or greater.
The development regulation A7, right?
Correct.
Okay.
An additional stipulation of no land disturbance until July 1, 2020, no building permits until January 1 of 2021. And that would be stipulation 11. And then stipulation 12 would be that a barrier on the easement, either natural or fencing.
So, I have a motion to approve by Mr. Lowe with the amendment to the development regulations A7, as well as two additional stipulations, both addressing the land disturbance in development of the property, delaying it. And then the second one is to stipulate a barrier, either natural or man-made, being put in place. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Turnbull. All in favor? Motion passes 6, 0, and 1. And again, the application will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration on December 10 at 2 o'clock. The applicant must be present or their agent must be present for it to be considered. And at this time, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Please be safe and hope to see you after the holiday is over at the next meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Lowe, second by Ms. Turnbull. All in favor? Motion passes 6, 0, and 1.
Thank you.